We'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order for March 13th, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Reader.
Maxman?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here. I have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? The floor has amended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? On the paper, aye?
Aye.
The floor's motion carried. Public comments. Anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Moving on to claims and payments for the county. Resolution for the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures.
The county's expenditures this week total $326,497.75, 326,497.75.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total $74,895.74, 74,895.74.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion on this item. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Number four, received project update from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on the roads. All roads are open. The gravel roads are continuing to be soft and numerous potholes. The frost is starting to come out of the ground. The motor graders are out this week, so we'll be touching up, trying to get some of those potholes filled in, making the roads in better condition. Next week, I did want to present information to you on our five-year plan. As you know, every year, we have to submit our five-year plan of road projects to the Iowa DOT before an April 15th deadline, so I'd like to have a work session to update you on what projects we have planned for the next five years, and then also to give you an update on the East Bennington Road Bridge. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, I did have a question. You had sent a letter a couple of weeks ago to the residents in Doar. I just wondered if you'd had any responses on that reservice.
So, we are... Excuse me, we have not received any. I'm just trying to recollect if we have received any responses. We have not, to my knowledge. I haven't talked to anybody about the upcoming project in Doar. I have not received any responses.
There were approximately how many letters that were sent?
I want to say there was fifty, fifty-five or fifty-eight letters that went out.
You have no discussion with Gale Mueller?
He did receive a letter. I had talked to him previously, but I have not talked to him in the last month or so about that project in particular.
I think their concerns are more the ditches, waterway and so forth.
Yes, and we tried to improve some of the ditches in that area. We will be cleaning out the ditches in that area. We do have an issue where the primary, the creek through there is maintained by the railroad. We cannot go onto their property without permission. I have told the railroad that we would like to be able to clean out our ditches, particularly on the east side of Raymond Road, as it flows around to the northeast. We would really like the railroad to clean that out so that we can do our cleaning and get the water to drain. We've been in discussions with the railroad, but they can be pretty specific about what's their property and what they have control of their own property. I can certainly give Mr. Mueller a call and address those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Any other elected official, department head? Moved on to number five. Minutes approved on March 6th.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? On the paper, aye?
Aye.
The floor's motion carried. Consent addendum by resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
Next is number seven, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from PDCM Waterloo, Iowa for Blackhawk County Insurance and Risk Management Services with a bid of $35,000 each year for the duration of the three-year contract.
Dana, would you like to brief the board?
Yeah, we sent out an RFP for Insurance and Risk Management Services on January 26th. The deadline was February 26th. The RFP was sent to three companies that ICAP have listed as affiliated through them, and then it was also sent to three or four companies that sent us bids in the past, just because any company can become affiliated with ICAP at any time. And then PDCM came back with the lowest bid of $35,000 each year for three years, and they're offering the same services that they have in the past, and so we'd like to go with them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any further discussion?
Like to also note, for the record, that this per year is less than what we're currently paying with PDCM. I think we're around, what, forty-one?
It was forty-six, I believe.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, so considerable less.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
Thank you.
This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from KW Electric Waterloo, Iowa for proposed courthouse lighting project, bid of $204,242. Be approved and directed to chairs assigned for same as recommended by Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. Mr. Givens?
Good morning, Board. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
As you're aware, for this project, we did receive two bids. This was the lowest of the two bids. We did go through this bid package, and we are making the recommendation for approval for low bid received from KW Electrical for $204,242. If you recall, back in February, we had a ceiling tile bid that was received, and at that time, that particular bid was over what we anticipated that cost being by substantially more. And I had made the comment that I felt, after all the bids received under this particular project, that I felt we'd be about $74,000 over budget. Receiving this electrical bid for the lighting and labor was very favorable to us. In fact, it was almost to the tune of $40,000 under what we anticipated for the lighting and labor. So, what that does for us as a total project, after we factor in the last remaining item under this project, which would be diffusers and duck work, and factoring in a rebate of $32,000, we're anticipating this total project of being approximately $34,000 over the original budget amount of $468,000. Susan, at that time, had sent out just a breakdown of our total fund balance, which she listed out several of my projects within our budget, within our department. What we're looking at as a possibility to cover this $34,000 is looking at our Pine Crest facility and leaving the interior lighting for the last item that we do under this budget, and that came budgeted at $54,000. So, if we hold off on that $54,000 and we need to cover this additional expense, that's where we would pull it from to accommodate that.
I thought when we talked the other day, you told me even though the lighting was over, the one you originally budgeted, but you had enough money left in the total amount of the project. Now, you're saying you're over that budgeted amount?
No, the total amount of the project was actually, came in at $534,000. We had $468 budgeted.
So, you were over regardless if it's the lighting or the tile?
Correct. The tile is the project that really shot this over. The lighting actually came under what we originally anticipated. So, that washed, didn't wash it completely, but it definitely made it closer to where our budget.
You're actually short then, how much?
Up $34,000. By the time we're said and done, we have one more phase of this project, and that's purchasing all the air diffusers and the duck work. We're anticipating that cost to come in at around $30,000.
You're going to take money from the Pine Crest project and not do that?
That's, we want to hold off on the interior lighting of the Pine Crest project. If there's not funds available under any other projects, or if we come under on other projects, that would be our go-to project to hold off on, to cover these, to cover this overage.
Now, when you say $34,000 over, are you also including the anticipated rebate?
Yes.
Are you going to start doing that? I mean, that seems like if it costs $100,000 to do a project, and you're anticipating a rebate, you're going to figure that in every time?
Typically, I don't. For this particular project, though, I knew after opening up the ceiling tile bid that I was over on that ceiling tile, so I factored in that rebate, so I can express to the board.
I don't think that's a good way of doing your bid.
Typically, I wouldn't do that. That rebate would be essentially above and beyond what the total project would cost.
Is that 100% sure you're getting that?
It's a $30 per fixture, so that is a prescriptive rebate. It's not a custom, so that is essentially a guarantee, and that was qualified by the lower-level project that we did. We did receive roughly almost $14,000 for that project in rebates, so that is, and we do meet with Clear Results, which is the energy efficiency advisor for our Mid American. We have monthly meetings with them, keeping them up to speed on the projects that we're doing to assure that we don't miss out on any potential rebate.
What's the completion of this project?
We have August 30th for a completion date.
What's your anticipation when you get the rebate, then?
Typically, after all said and done, just based on our lower-level project, it took, by the time the application was received, it was actually a pretty quick turnaround time. It took about a month for them to process the application. Once that application was submitted, there is several pieces of information that we have to provide to them. They have to come and essentially do an audit to make sure that what we have in our application meets what we actually did, just the checks and balances. Anticipated start time, if this is approved today, our next step will be then meeting with the electrical contractor and the ceiling tile contractor together, and then coming up with our construction plan, where we want to start, getting the lights ordered. For these particular fixtures, there's approximately a four-week lead time, is what they're telling me. LED fixtures, that's pretty common in the industry. That's, depending on what kind of fixture you go with, there is quite a lead time for those. We would not want to start removing the ceiling tiles until we knew that the lights were en route to us or here on site. What the challenging part of this project's going to be is staging areas. If you recall, when we did the basement, we were fortunate enough to have the conference room down there to call our staging area. In this particular case, we've required the contractor to have a trailer, and so what I may have to end up doing is the parking lot on the southwest corner of the courthouse, I may designate a spot or two to set a construction trailer out there, and then we may also dedicate a spot in the main lobby, rope it off, and dedicate an area down there to store material as we work on this project.
I don't know who parks over there, but you can lock the whole thing off. Take them all out of there. Then maybe they won't use that side door that they're not supposed to use.
Yeah.
Rory, what's the projected energy efficiency on these projects?
So, what we figured out, if we just, for easy math, our projection for the lower level is approximately $2,500 a year. So, if you take that up, first, second, and third floor, then potentially combining all of those together, we could be looking at about a $10,000 a year energy reduction.
Why not use the front door, Rory? Wouldn't that be more feasible?
It's possible we could pull a trailer up. We just have to be very careful to, we have to make sure we leave a path for emergency exits. So, that's, that is a possibility, as long as we can leave, you know, an appropriate path for evacuating the building.
Any other questions for Rory?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved to second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
White? Yes, resolution adopted. Next is, this is a resolution to change order for the Pine Crest Generator Project and amount of $1,772 for integration of the generator operations into the building management system and for the removal of an existing main breaker.
Mr. Givens?
Morning again.
Moved to seconded.
Okay, an explanation on what this change order consists of. It's two things. First of all, there's a existing, I'll call it an enunciator, that's built within the generator over there at Pine Crest. The purpose of this is to alarm us if there's any issues with the generator. You know, you have several, you have a heater, block heater in this unit that we do need to make sure that it's working correctly. What this particular tie-in does to us is it allows us to pull this generator up on the head end, the main building head end system. And what that means is, this is the Johnson Control System that essentially operates the HVAC for that facility. It's the brains of the facility, if you'd say. This ties that generator into that, to where we would be able to actually see the generator from other locations. I could pull this generator up from the courthouse here and see if there's any alarms that are popped up. Pine Crest is the one facility that if we are short-staffed, we will send people over to Pine Crest on a as-need basis. We shift people around within our department. This just gives us the ability to better manage that generator. Part of the project did consist of having that wire available to do this. This just finishes that process out. The other part is breaker. What we found out after the installation of this generator is the original main breaker, the facility essentially was not compatible with the main breaker that came with the generator. The two were kind of contradicting each other, and so we felt it was in the best interest just to remove the original main breaker, which is a preferred method anyway with the fire department, so they have a one source to go to kill that power. That, that's what that additional cost, and I think that was $575 of that change order. So, again, we just felt that we were, it was in the best interest of that facility.
Total project?
Total project cost. The contract amount was for $107,750, and then you would add this change order to that. Total budgeted amount was $160,000. On top of that, we also received a grant money from the health department. I want to say, Susan, that was in the tune of $20,000 if I'm not mistaken. So, budget-wise, it supports the change order as far as the budget goes. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Givens. You have a motion and a second on this?
Yes.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White? Yes, resolution adopted. This is D. This is a resolution that the agency agreement addendum between Blackhawk County and Marcus and Milachap regarding potential dual agency be approved.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Really, E and D maybe are out of order, so I'm going to talk about E for just one second, then come back to D. E is really a listing agreement that you had looked at and we had negotiated with Marcus and Milachap. And then D, a state requirement, whenever you enter into a listing agreement with the realtor, they need to disclose whether they're representing you, whether they're representing the buyer, or whether they're possibly going to represent both parties. So, these are pretty standard documents. My recommendation is that we would sign those because they're required by state law to enter into an agreement with the realtor, but we had also note that we are not agreeing to a dual representation. We've hired them. We expect them to represent us. If they actually have a client that happened to be the high bidder that they wanted to bring, we could discuss at that point in time whether, how that was going to work, but we are not, my recommendation, we would not agree upfront that they could be a dual agent, and so that they would be our exclusive agent in representing us and us only in this. And so, that's what it is, state requirement, that they, as realtors, are required to comply with in order, really to do E, the listing agreement.
Do you prefer we do E first and then do D?
Yeah, I don't think it matters. I just wanted to explain that they really go hand to hand. If you enter into a listing agreement, state law requires the realtor, their licensure board requires them to do D.
Any questions?
What you're saying, you know, in D, it says regarding potential dual agency be approved.
Yeah. Yeah, so the form, you have the right to select different options on that form, and one, you know, we agree that you can be a dual agent. We will not check that one. We will check the one that we will not agree that you can be a dual agent, and that is my recommendation. It's called a, it's an agency disclosure form, and, you know, some states don't allow dual agency. State of Iowa does. I can give you a big analysis of why. You probably don't care. But in our situation, given our, what I believe is our unique situation, that we would not carte blanche agree to dual agency. If the situation arose that it, they wanted that, then we would have to bring that back up, discuss, and decide whether that was in best interest of the county.
Is the item D, is that language correct then, or it sounds like we're approving dual agency?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe the wording, maybe the wording in that resolution, I think it could be clarified to approve the agency disclosure agreement with the understanding that we will not consent, you know, to dual agency.
We have that part of our resolution.
Yeah.
Comfortable with that, Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Did you get that, Susan?
I think it's grant.
Grant.
She's getting it right now.
Put it in the minutes.
Yep.
I move to approve the resolution. D with the language added to it.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the Real Estate Agency Relationships Disclosure between Blackhawk County and Marcus and Milachap detailing the type of representation with the agent that exists be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business, this is a resolution that the taxes due and payable of the submitted persons as indicated, including special assessments and rates of, or charges, including interest fees and costs in accordance with the provision of 427.9 of the Court of Iowa, be suspended in the future. Property taxes of the owned by the persons will be suspended for such time remains the owner of the parcel.
So move on the resolution.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is B, resolution to approve the release of the Country View RFP as recommended by Susan Deaton, Country View Finance Director, or County Finance Director, excuse me.
I know it has my name, but I'm going to let Eric go ahead.
Yeah, so the RFP is what we have placed in front of you, has been worked through with Susan, myself, and Marcus and Milachap as to how Country View will be listed and what the terms of that listing are. You gave some feedback at one of your previous meetings about some of the things that you'd like to see in there. I think most of that is included. I'm sure you've had a chance to go through it. Certainly, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go for it.
One was regarding the requiring them to have a minimum, I mean, having a skilled nursing facility for a minimum of 10 years on the real property. And I know we are typically looking at them remaining in the community, but I was just thinking, in the instance that perhaps after they were here two or three years, maybe they wanted to construct a new facility, or they wanted to purchase something like a Ridgeway Place for other operations, or if they were a local company that perhaps had facilities in the area. If that's saying that they have to maintain or stay at that facility, does that, is that too restrictive if there were, and maybe that's just something that can be discussed later. I was just wondering if...
Yeah, Marcus and Milachap, and Susan can chime in when I'm done, but they seem to think that from their experience, that whoever would spend that amount of money would certainly keep that facility up and operating. They didn't, they didn't seem to have any problem with the 10 years. They thought it was, they thought nobody's going to spend that much money and close that facility, that they were going to spend that much money to keep operating it as a care facility, and so I guess we lean on them because we haven't sold care facilities in the past, and they have, but they, they didn't seem to have any concern with it, and to the extent they're our broker and we're relying on their expertise, and to the extent that may be lessons, fears, or concerns as to what's going to happen with that, I guess we might as well leave it in there.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with leaving it in there. I just wondered if that, and I wondered then if perhaps when they submit a proposal, perhaps someone would put that in, or maybe they would ask for that change if they thought it was a, something to consider.
Certainly, if somebody submitted a bid, it states in there that it would be a deed restriction, so it'd be a restrictive covenant on the use of the facility and how it would need to be used. But if somebody wanted to submit a bid, and they said, "We only want to use it for a care facility for five years," ultimately, you have authority to consider and take what you think to be the best bid, and if they could map out some great reason why, because they were going to build a brand-new facility, and you could make that part of it, you could always go down that road. Once again, given what I think someone's going to pay for the facility, I don't, I can't see them wanting to close it. It would just wouldn't make, it wouldn't make sense.
I guess to the question that Supervisor Layland mentioned, if they were to consider building a new facility at the same site, it would still fall into that agreement that we had.
Yeah, it would. I think the property is really just defined as that campus, and so if they were going to build on-site there, I would think they certainly could, all within the spirit of the agreement.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much as on-site as if they wanted to go inside the community or something closer proximity, closer, so just didn't want to restrict them if it was for the betterment of everyone to have that.
Got another one?
Yeah, my other question regarding...
Yeah, my other question regarding the, it says only purchase proposals equal to or above the five and a half million. Obviously, we all know with real estate, sometimes proposals come in less. I wondered if, and this may be not be a fair question for you, if by the date of May 11th, we have no proposals, and I'm assuming, like I said, we're trusting them to know the market very well, and, and assuming that there will be, and I think with the cost, we thought as well, five and a half million is what they said they offered. So I just thought, I wondered if in the process, they would have those conversations with companies and be able to share that with us, or if we waited till the 11th and see when those bids came in to know that, and really would kind of extend the process if we didn't have anybody, so.
Yeah. Once again, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking for somebody else, but my conversations with them, they seem to think that the five and a half was sort of the floor, and they thought that they could come in higher. Certainly, as people are calling and discussing with them and getting more information, if they indicate, "We aren't, we aren't getting offers because nobody wants to offer that," that's going to be communicated back to you, and then you'll make decisions, you know, do we still want to move forward with this, or do we want to move forward but realize that we're going to have to accept less? So I, I assume that they will communicate that if, if they aren't getting any bids.
Yeah, I knew it was somewhat unfair to ask you that question, but I just thought those were the questions from our standpoint, so thank you.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Did you get a motion?
I don't think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Moved in seconded, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
No.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. Any reports or information from the board?
I say that tonight at Warley Public Library at six o'clock, I'll be pulling a teach-in with the Iowa Policy Project about the implications of the, the new federal tax bill and, and state tax bills that are, that are pending. So we'll have free sandwiches at six o'clock and a presentation at 6:30.
Anyone else?
Who's "we"?
The Iowa Policy Project. I, I provide the sandwiches, they provide the expertise.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.